Good afternoon, everyone. I call to order this June 26, 2023, special meeting of the University of Minnesota Board of Regents. Thank you to everyone joining us in the boardroom and via livestream today. I would also note that we have several regions attending via Zoom. In fact, that's quite the understatement. We have everybody attending by Zoom, except for Regent Wheeler and in the around the horseshoe here where it is very lonesome is Regent Farnsworth and myself. All right. Our first and only item of business today is the President's recommended fiscal year 2024 annual operating budget. We reviewed the proposed budget at the June meeting of the Finance and Operations Committee, and it's back before us for action today. I want to thank members of the university community who commented in person at the Budget Forum earlier in June and to those who have provided written comments to the Board via the Budget Comment Form on our website. Your input, which is available to the public in the Board's docket, is valuable to me and my colleagues as we reviewed the budget and prepared to act today. Before we have our discussion, is there a motion to approve the resolution included in the docket materials?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Intern President Ettinger, would you like to make a few comments?
Yes, thank you very much, Chair Mayron. It's really my pleasure to be joining you here today as the Board acts on the fiscal year 24 operating budget. I will acknowledge that I've come into this discussion pretty late in the process. However, I have been briefed on the framework of the budget and its general parameters in terms of the state appropriations, tuition, and compensation. State funding is a critical element of our budget framework, and I want to thank the Governor and the Legislature for their support this year. I also understand that the University Senate Committee on Finance and Planning was actively engaged throughout the budget planning process. I would like to extend my appreciation to them and to our other shared governance partners as well. Chair Mayron, I fully endorse the budget before you today. I have the utmost confidence in the work done by Senior Vice President Franz and Vice President Tonneson, and I look forward to their presentation and your deliberation on the budget today.
Thank you, President Ettinger. And now, Senior Vice President Franz and Assistant Vice President Tonneson, would you please note any changes to the budget since the Board reviewed it before we open the floor for questions and discussion? We'll give you a few minutes to get set up here.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and members of the Board and President Ettinger. Thank you for that vote of confidence, and I think Vice President Tonneson and I would both be remiss if we didn't talk about and also thank you the people who supported and were engaged in this process. This process started about a year ago. In fact, tomorrow afternoon, we start the process for fiscal '25, just so you know. That's the amount of time we put into this in terms of listening, talking to people around the university community. We go unit by unit when we go through the review of this process. And as President Ettinger noted, we also have an engaged thoughtful process with the Legislature. We also want to thank the Legislature and the Governor for their support, and we look forward to continuing this effort going forward. So I would like to just point out that at a minimum, a couple of things so that we can get into the discussion and any questions, because as you mentioned, Chair Mayron, we did have a really good discussion of this earlier in June. The size of this budget is significant. It's $4.5 billion in expenditures and $4.4 billion, I'm sorry, $4.5 billion in revenues and $4.4 billion in expenditures. We'd like to make a couple of technical correction notes, and then we can get into the meat of the discussion, if that's all right. Madam Chair, I'll have Vice President Tonneson go through those technical corrections.
All right, thank you. Vice President Tonneson.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Chair Mayron, members of the Board, we found two things we needed to change between June 8th and today. They are, so there's two corrections, they are minor, and they have not changed any of the substance of our recommendations. The first thing is, we learned that the state provided a $10 million one-time appropriation for the medical school on the CentraCare campus in St. Cloud. Those dollars are to be spent over a period of years primarily on student support, but they have been added to our O&M appropriation for FY '24, so we had to add that into the totals. And then, secondly, we corrected just a couple of tuition rates in the tables for the College of Continuing and Professional Studies. Those corrections did not change their revenue estimates or any of the numbers presented in the budget. The tables were just considered a typo. They were incorrect. And those are the only two changes between June 8th and today.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, one more comment, then I think we're ready to go through some general slides to remind folks of the numbers we're talking about. There are really, the Board of Regents has the important responsibility to review and approve this budget, and I think one of the things we wanted to make sure and talk about was, we believe that we're in a stable financial position. We did have several unanticipated challenges this last year, one of them being the tuition-revenue shortfall that we experienced, and another obviously is dealing with inflation like all businesses and colleges and universities have to deal with. So those two factors in particular were important for us to consider. We wanted to make sure that we supported the 2025 plan with its emphasis on student success. One of the things that we had to also deal with was the appropriation from the state was only for a full appropriation for fiscal '24. We did not get an increase in fiscal '25, and as you know, the Legislature budget's on a two-year cycle, so there's no certainty, or in fact, there's less than any certainty that we'll get any additional funds in the next session during a non-budget year. So we have to work into our equation for this year to make sure that we're anticipating a shortfall for the proposed increase we recommended for fiscal '25. But with that, I think we can go through the slides quickly. Madam Chair, I'd be ready for any discussion.
All right, let's do it.
Okay, first, and again, this is just a summary of the major components of the budget that we are asking you to approve today. On the revenue side, as Senior Vice President Franz mentioned, we are looking at projected revenues of roughly $4.5 billion. Within that, the state appropriation remains about 17% of our total revenues. It's in two pieces on this chart, the 15% in the darker green for the O&M appropriation, and then there's another 2% embedded within the red part as restricted state specials. So that will be 17% of our total revenues. The two large discretionary sources of income for the institution, the state O&M appropriation and tuition in the dark green, those are the two pieces we can essentially do anything lawful with, and those two will make up 38% of our total resources. And the final thing I'll mention here this morning is that sponsored funding continues to grow. Based on projected spending, it is estimated to be $780 million next year, which will be 17% of our total revenues, a high point for us in recent history. And I mentioned the spending because we actually record sponsored revenues as they are spent on a reimbursement basis, so we estimate spending, and that tells us what our estimated revenue will be. So those are the revenues. On the spending side, we are projected to come in just short of the revenues at $4.4 billion. Compensation remains our number-one expense. We are a people place with over 62% of our expenditures projected to be on salaries and fringe. While the total is projected to grow 4% over this year, essentially equal to the current rate of inflation, the proportion of the pie that each category represents is not expected to change, so each is growing proportionately. The three largest categories of compensation, student aid and general supplies and services, make up 85% of our spending, and that again is on trend with recent past. Jumping to the framework funds, again, this is primarily the state and tuition part of the budget and the decisions the university is recommending to you for approval. The largest incremental change in framework resources is the growth in the state appropriation. It will be up $55.5 million on a recurring basis, $46.6 million of which we propose to help address the framework costs that we will show on the next slide. And then, $8.9 million of that $55.5, we propose to hold for addressing a small portion of the cost increases projected for FY '25. That's a piece of what Senior Vice President Franz mentioned as preparing for the FY '25 budget. The second-largest incremental change in resources, or $47.8 million total, will come from our recommended reallocations in units, that's $18.5 million, and the use of growth in other uncommitted revenues that they're bringing to the table, which is another $21 million. Those two combined are the $39.5 million in the lower left on this slide. And then, we are proposing the use of $8.3 million in central balances to help bridge some very specific situations for one year, just over $2 million for the Crookston, Duluth, and Morris campuses, and just over $6 million for three large colleges on the Twin Cities campus that are dealing with unanticipated actual-to-budget variances in tuition revenue this year. This slide is labeled recurring resources, and yet I am mentioning balances here, which are a one-time resource. But the reason for that is, we are kind of naming these balances as bridging funds, meaning that they are taking the place of recurring resources or expenditure reductions for just one year, with the plans that they'll be replaced with the current versions moving forward. So you could think about that $8.3 million as recurring resources that are not yet identified but will be in the very near future. And finally, the third resource component we are recommending for growth is tuition revenue, with proposed rate increases of 3.5% on the Twin Cities and Rochester campuses and 1% on the Crookston, Duluth, and Morris campuses, all under the rate of inflation. And that is combined along with various rate changes in the professional program rates and some master's and certificate program rates. As we mentioned earlier this month, the tuition rate changes for resident undergraduate students will be more than offset for those eligible by the increases in the state grant program and Pell, which also then contribute an amount to increased costs in fees and room and board as well. On the spending side, or the investment side, we propose close to $118 million of new spending on the items that you see here. Compensation remains our largest cost increase, and in the framework funds, a 4% increase for labor-represented employees plus a 3.75% merit pool and 0.25% market adjustment pool for all other employee groups will add a cost increase of over $58 million for next year. Beyond that, the budget-to-actual variance in tuition revenue for the current year that we discussed several times over the last five months or so does require a solution, which adds a $23.3 million cost to the budget. Then, as I mentioned at the last meeting, we have kind of a perfect storm related to increased debt and utility costs in the same year in FY '24. And combining that with our annual inflation on the technology system licensing and agreements, those combined will be about a $14 million increase. And then, the various investments necessary in support units and academic units will add the final $22.4 million in costs. That's the last two pieces of the pie in the upper left. Examples here include things like our public safety enhancements, required matches for the President's Scholarship Program, inflation on library collections, a position to help our environmental compliance, a new transfer admissions office, the new appropriation for unemployment compensation, unemployment insurance aid, excuse me. Those are all examples of items in that bucket, and the full list of those non-compensation investments is included in your materials as Attachment 4. In closing then, Madam Chair and members, we believe, we know, that the budget we are recommending for approval today is balanced and is focused on addressing only the priority spending items, many of which are required to maintain current operations. It's also focused on a reasonable and responsible compensation increase for our faculty and staff, holding changes in the cost of attendance down thanks to our state appropriation increase for core operations and our plans to implement not insignificant reallocation expectations on our units. So that is a brief summary, Madam Chair, and we're happy to answer questions or discuss any portion of our proposed budget, and we thank you for your attention.
Thank you. At this time, we'll open the discussion up for questions or comments by my colleagues. As you're thinking about whether you wish to put forth a question or discussion, let me just say, I want to thank Senior Vice President Franz and Vice President Tonneson and all of the units and departments and colleges that worked together to devise this budget. I know it is a very difficult budget. It is a very complex budget in very complex and difficult times when inflation has gone up and we had to deal with the shortfall. I'm always struck personally when I hear what the contribution is of the state to our budget now, which I believe you said is about 17% of our operating budget. And think about what it was when I was an undergrad where it was about 70% at that time. What we have done in order to basically take on the burden of diminished funds from the Legislature and figure out a way to do it ourselves, and with, obviously, much of this falling on students through increased tuition. There is no question that at the end of the day, the Legislature's decision places a lot of responsibility to fund this budget on students, which I think we are all painfully aware is not where we want to end up, but this is where we are. So I just want to thank you for what you worked on and everybody who contributed to get to this place. With that, let me see, Regent Farnsworth.
Thank you, Chair Mayron, and just a few quick comments. Really want to echo the Chair's thanks for everyone involved in the budget process. Also want to thank those from the university community who submitted quite comprehensive and helpful public comment on the President's recommended FY '24 annual operating budget. I read all those that are, you know, we had a chance to review those that are in our docket and want to thank folks for taking the time. A few strengths I see from this budget and the very comprehensive materials in front of us that I think are worth calling out, that actually, one, that Vice President Tonneson talked about at the beginning, which is the investment from the state in the University of Minnesota Medical School campus. That's going to be great and something that's really critical for the future of healthcare in the state and how the university is partnering on delivering that mission in greater Minnesota. So looking forward to reviewing the future detailed spending plans that are under development that were mentioned in here. The second thing is the continued impact 2025 investment in what we call the people factor. I think, you know, we've heard that very clearly from groups on campus, from staff, from faculty, and, you know, that's very important for the many reasons that people are aware of and that we've talked about before. The merit pool increases and the market adjustment pool increases, and so I'm really glad to see what many of us have heard for a while in small group meetings and different engagements, seeing that investment reflected in the budget is critical. Two more things, the increased spend on safety and security, you know, partially thanks to the funding that we received from the Legislature. That's really critical and important and responsive to things that we've been hearing as an institution and things, of course, that we wanted to do and ways to improve. And then, the last thing I wanted to point out as a strength, now there's many, but just picking a few, is looking at page 79 of our docket under student services fees. You know, if you just look at the numbers, and I think that we saw this reflected at our last board meeting and then in some of the comments, you can look at a percentage, and maybe it seems high or there might be concern there, but I really appreciated the narrative from Vice President Phillips around particularly some of the larger percentage increases on the system campuses, seeing that our University of Minnesota Rochester campus is going to, you know, have increased student service and student support in recreation facilities, intercultural center spaces, staffing and programming, mental health care, all things that numerous of us on the Board have seen in campus visits and that we've heard are important investments, bringing the $15 minimum wage for student employees up at some of our campuses. There's many other examples I'm not touching on, but that's what some of these increases are going towards. And I've been on the Student Services Fee Committee here at the Twin Cities campus, and so I understand how complicated that is and want to thank those folks who served in that capacity as well. Two things quickly I'll say, then I'll wrap up, is I really want to see us continue to work on tuition and affordability as we move forward, particularly on the system campuses. I understand, you know, tuition increases being, in relation to tuition increases and the rate of inflation and all of that, but, and I've said this before around the horseshoe here, but hearing concerns around sticker price and accessibility and affordability on the system campuses, I think those are real and things that we need to look at. And then, our last thing, which is, I mentioned in the strengths column, but of course, continues to be a challenge as well, which is, you know, investing in our talent is a top priority, which is a top priority and clearly is reflected here. But I was struck by some of the public comments, and of course, we know this already around how we're doing that as it relates to cost of living increases, and there were some other details that, you know, only folks who are experiencing it would know, such as parking and some other things that might be helpful, and an innovative tuition reimbursement model for, or looking at our tuition reimbursement model for staff and faculty. So looking forward to hearing what other colleagues have to say, but those are my comments, and thank you again to the team that put this together. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Regent Farnsworth. Regent Verhalen.
Thank you, Chair Mayron. I have a question for clarification from Senior Vice President Franz and Vice President Tonneson. In both the public forum as well as the comments we received, there were a number of individuals who expressed concern around the African-American and African Studies, the American Indian Studies, the Chicano and Latino Studies, and then the Gender Women and Sexuality Studies programs. And I know we, as Regents, receive some additional information on those programs, but I think it would be helpful to receive some additional conversation here and additional background on those programs, as well as what the end result is, is that there was no reduction in the instructional budgeting, but perhaps a little bit of context would be helpful.
Senior Vice President Franz or Vice President Tonneson?
Sure, I'd be happy to address that. Chair Mayron, Regent Verhalen, we've been working with the Dean of the College of Liberal Arts to understand, as you are aware, we have a sort of decentralized management structure, so they had to help us understand their internal decision-making process within the college. And our understanding is, as he has reported to us, that there will be no budget reduction in the departments that he has listed, African-American and African Studies, American Indian Studies, Chicano and Latino Studies, Gender Women and Sexuality Studies. Their instructional budget will be held, and they will also not receive a general budget reduction as part of the budget process. The college overall, I want to be clear, has been asked to reallocate and reduce spending in the college, and they have proposed different ways to do that, one of which was to reduce the budget they set aside for that instructional support, largely TA support for courses. And a lot of that, over half of it, is because they hadn't been spending what they had set aside previously for it, and the other part is because their enrollment has dropped, and so they don't have as many courses to support. So the college is reducing that part of their budget, but those departments will have the TA budget to support the courses they are offering. So there is no cut to them in terms of what they have to provide for the courses. We also, as an institution, reduced the college's expected reallocation so they would not have to cut the general operating supplies and support for those departments as well, so that isn't happening either. But the college is still participating in a reallocation plan overall, so I hope that helps.
And they're not the only college that is involved in a reallocation, correct?
Oh, I wish that was the case. Regent Mayron, no, they all, every college is included in the reallocation plan.
All right. And just so you know, Chance, our Provost, Croson, I'm going, I was going to say Provost Rachel, but that would be not correct, is here, and if there's anything that you wanted to add, you felt you wanted to add, please feel free to step up to the podium as Art of the Shoe. I can't talk. Step up to the desk here and talk to us. All right, thank you. Regent Verhalen, does that answer your question? Do you have any follow-up question or comment?
No, I don't. I just felt it was really important context for purposes of this discussion, given the number of comments we received, both at the public forum earlier this month as well as in the written comments we received. So thank you very much.
All right, thank you very much. Regent Turner.
Thank you, Chair Mayron. My question is in regards to, and I was made first aware of this when I was in my onboarding with Senior Vice President Franz. It's in regards to all of, I realized during the pandemic, we had to cut back on staff, one of them being environmental services, or what I call environmental services. And I'm curious as to whether we are intending to come back to the same levels of staff that were there before the pandemic, or where we're at with that, or if we're stuck, if we're holding on hiring. Being a nurse, I'm not real keen on cutting back too far on what I would call environmental services. To me, it's a health and safety issue, but I would like, and it was, this was one question that I put forward to Brian Steves before last week. And so if someone could address this, if they are on a hiring freeze or if they're not, and if they're on one, how long is it for?
Thank you. And Senior Vice President Franz, if you need the assistance, want to call a friend, meaning Vice President Horstman, he's also in the audience and could join you at the horseshoe.
Well, I'd always take the opportunity to invite my friend, Vice President Horstman, to the table. I'll just start off by saying that one of the things that we do feel like we have returned to our pre-pandemic service levels, and I think one of the things we wanted to make clear is that in regard to this, to these questions that we got, I think it was Friday, sometime Friday, that we've looked into that, and I think Vice President Horstman has a few comments he can make about those.
All right. Vice President Horstman.
Chair Mayron, members of the Board, yes, first, we did have a hiring freeze during the initial year, year and a half of the pandemic that moved into what we called the hiring pause, where we were reviewing certain levels of positions, especially those that seemed to be necessary but had not been placed in the current budget. And as we announced recently, as we came through the end of the emergency, those measures are ending with the end of FY '23. And frankly, there has not been a hold on any positions other than to review staff positions that were above $75,000 annually, and the Provost also looked at tenure-track faculty Since the impact of that freeze and pause collectively, which included a retirement incentive program, we're a little under 1,000 positions at one. incentive program, we're a little under 1,000 positions at one point. As we came back out of '21 into '22 and now in '23, many of those positions have already been hired back, perhaps in different capacities than before. You know, there is some sign that more direct academic hiring occurred and the like, but we have returned to a level that we saw probably in 2019, 2018. We're a little below that yet. In regard to the questions from Friday afternoon put forward by our Teamster local, we do not agree there has not been a message that there is a hiring freeze in regard to university services or facilities management. What that area is contending with, and like all of our areas do, is they do have a reallocation under the budget that they are planning to accomplish. And where there is some impact on positions is in the custodial positions, of which we have about 500 at the university. And the action being taken is to attrit a total of 11 positions or 2% of that population. There is no halt on hiring of other Teamster positions. There are mechanics on the board right now and utility workers as examples, and that will continue. So there is not a layoff, there is not a hiring freeze, and they are monitoring it. In the current situation with hybrid work, they do not think that the reduction to 489 from 500 will impact the university system-wide, given their new approach to cleaning protocol. And I know they're monitoring it. If they see a different need, they will address it as they go forward. I don't know, SVP Franz and VP Tonason, if there's any other details you want to provide?
I would just add, Madam Chair and Regent Turner, that I think one of the things that we try to do, that all units, as Vice President Tonason mentioned, all units go through a reallocation process, is the nature of our limited resource game these days, and we have to be careful. And facilities management went through that process like everyone else, and as Vice President Horstman described, we're trying to make the best decisions we can. So that's where we are. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much, Regent Turner. Any follow-up to the response?
Just so that I'm hearing this right, so as far as you're saying that it's 11 positions that you're holding on or going to decreasing by attrition, it's not 11 FTEs? Is that correct?
Well, it is.
President Horstman?
Yes. Chair Mayron, Regent Turner, it is 11 positions, which I equate to 11 FTEs, yes, out of 500.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Regent Gully.
Thank you, Chair. I just want to express that, obviously, a few of us are new on this board, and I know, you know, and Meyer and Franz mentioned this a few minutes ago, but we have been in this budgeting process for a year. So it's not an easy thing to sort of come in right at the end and try to make any sorts of adjustments. But we've been talking about this a lot, and I hope that, and I just want to express this for the record, that it is extremely important to me that we're thinking about ways to bring down student tuition and student debt. And I hear things like the, you know, like in recent history, our state has covered 70% of the operating expenses for the university, so students were able to come out of school without taking on a huge amount of debt. And I'm so grateful to the legislature for the additional funding that they put into the university and also for the effort to bring tuition for students under, whose families make under $80,000, to make the tuition free. But I think we need to continue this, and I hope that over the next year, we can continue to build the work that we're doing with the legislature so that we can bring those costs down for students. So this won't be something that we have to keep doing year over year over year. So I appreciate all of the work that's been done on this and also, you know, come at this with a feeling of it being complicated, right? And so I want to express that and really think about how we go into next year, thinking about how we bring those costs down for students.
Thank you, Regent Gully. And if your comment was that this is a change in recent history from 70%, that's very nice of you to say, but we're talking five decades ago. This is, it may be recent history to you, but it is not to me.
I appreciate that, yes.
All right. I don't think there's a question there, there's a comment in talking about what we do on a going-forward basis. Any other questions or comments by any of my colleagues? All right, hearing and seeing none, I think we are at a point where we can vote, given there, basically everyone is on Zoom, we are going to be doing a roll call. And so Executive Director Steves, if you would call the roll.
On the budget resolution for FY 2024, Regent Davenport.
Yes.
Regent Davenport votes yes. Regent Farnsworth?
Yes.
Regent Farnsworth votes yes. Regent Gully?
Yes.
Regent Gully votes yes. Regent Hipsh?
Yes.
Regent Hipsh votes yes. Regent Ruth Johnson?
Yes.
Regent Ruth Johnson votes yes. Regent Tad Johnson?
Yes.
Regent Tad Johnson votes yes. Regent Kinyanya?
Yes.
Regent Kinyanya votes yes. Regent Tayurabe?
Yes.
Regent Tayurabe votes yes. Regent Turner?
Yes.
Regent Turner votes yes. Regent Verhalen?
Yes.
Regent Verhalen votes yes. Regent Wheeler is absent. Chair Mayron?
Yes.
Chair Mayron votes yes.
The motion passes unanimously, 11 to 0. And that concludes our business for today. Thank you very much, everyone who are here in the boardroom, those of you watching on Zoom, and those of you who participated on Zoom.